I'm going to call the meeting of the county commissioners to order. There's one announcement, the county commission meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before us tonight? Is there any new business from the board? Next item is approval of minutes warrants in pending contracts. The minutes for June 21st were previously sent out. Is there a motion, any changes? Is there a second? All those in favor, aye. Any comments, questions on payroll and treasury warrants? If not, they're approved as presented. We have one pending contract. Does anyone have a question about that? Or would they like to just move approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
No? That's passes. Any commissioners' reports or comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All yours.
Okay. Open the July 19th Board of Selectment meeting. With acceptance of the agenda, we are just, a board request to move forward the policy discussion in regard to the banners, to discuss it prior to the citizen departmental requests. And we will be, we'll have to do a motion, but under the public hearings, we'll be continuing all of number five and A of number six. And under Town Manager's report, number four has been removed. So with those changes, we'll accept the agenda unless there's any objections. Announcements?
We just have two announcements. This meeting is being video and audio recorded, and our next board meeting is Wednesday, August 9th, other than this Friday, which is a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor.
Okay. Is there any other public comment tonight for an item that's not otherwise on our agenda? Hearing none. Any new business? Nothing that I'm aware of. Hearing none. Approval of minutes warrants in pending contracts?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The payroll warrants and treasury warrants, we'll accept those by unanimous consent. Approval of pending contracts? Any questions on the contracts?
No. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under consent, we have one resignation. Any motion?
Oh, motion to approve.
And we'll send, we'll send a letter. Thanks.
It's troubling when you see someone resign from three different boards all at once. That's not a, we want to be adding people. We want to be inclusive and nice and adding people, not driving them away.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There are some open, open seats. I don't know if we should re-advertise.
We're going to do another one.
Okay, great. Citizen departmental request. Okay, we just wanted to have a brief discussion about the policy, I think, prior or in conjunction with the Nantucket Preservation Trust banner request.
So, last time when I made the motion to approve, the last applicant, it was, it suggested we bring this policy back for discussion. There was some, I think, at least in my mind, some confusion about the use of the banners for something that's not a festival and not a fundraising event. That's what this specifies here. And I don't know if this is something the boards would be interested in.
How do you mean by interested, Jim?
I guess this is, so who did, Libby, did Town Administration draft this revision?
We drafted, I mean, it's a revision only for the board's discussion based on what we heard at the meeting.
All right.
I'll wait, and I think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's ready yet. I think just naming something a festival doesn't make it, sort of, doesn't, doesn't make it special enough, doesn't mean it necessarily warrants being placed there. And I think part of it is the, it should be, it should actually be something special. It could, and so adding just the word "festival" doesn't do it for me here. I think that we need to refine it. And then number two is, I think that, I looked at the banners that are up right now, and they're, they're just, are not appealing the way they're hung. I think there's a way to, if we are going to allow banners on Main Street, and I kind of, in the middle of this, I wish I had voted against it, because it was a 3-2 vote originally. If we are going to allow them on Main Street, I think they should be a certain size and done a certain way, and all hang the same way. It shouldn't happen that often. And it shouldn't be for, you know, profit-making ventures. It shouldn't be for fundraisers. It should be for the, you know, 100th anniversary or the 50th anniversary. It should be things like that, that we all are, like, supporting as a community. And I'm not sure that we get at it by just changing the word "festival," which I'm sure we don't get at it by just changing the word "festival." So I think that we need some more work on it.
Yeah.
And it might be the strategic planning. You know, this might be the first easy thing that we do, to try to do it right from the beginning, so.
What are some examples that people would be interested in having? Like the Film Festival? Would that be one, for example?
I, yeah, I mean, I think that the festival doesn't quite get at it, but something like the Film Festival, when it's their 20th anniversary, 50th anniversary, that kind of thing. I'm very, I'm really concerned that everyone is going to keep wanting this to advertise their fundraiser. And there's about, I don't know, 100-plus fundraisers on the island every year. And there are some concerns with how they're being hung, who's hanging them, who's taking them down if they overstay their welcome. And, and the sign committee has approved them for their content, but I don't know if they approved exactly the shape and how they're fastened and that particular look of them. So I just, I think that we need to get out a few more things here. I don't really feel like it's fair to not grant the request that we have tonight, but that we do have to.
And I would ask why? Why don't you think it's fair?
Because they've gone, based on our existing policy, and gone through the whole process of having them approved. And I think we could put some parameters about how they're hung and so forth, with maybe Admin's recommendation on how to word that. But I think we need to refine this policy a little bit further.
I think there's got to be a way that, you can work with DPW, like, what would it cost for them to go, have to go out beforehand and put up XYZ piece of hook, right? And you can only get one kind of sign. It makes it easy for everybody, but maybe that's part of the fee. What would it cost for, not that DPW needs any more work.
Right.
But, so it looks, it's all the same, and it's uniform. But I think what you were saying, they're all fundraisers, or they're all for-profit, either way, and they're all special to that particular organization. So I think we are going to have to define, define what we, if we're going to continue to do it for future years.
I think it should be done very rarely.
Yeah. More major anniversaries.
And I think if we, if we add that message tonight, I'm very comfortable with saying this is, you know, we don't go forward. That's why I asked to have it moved up, in case there was interest in the board of revising the policy tonight. Because the current policy talks about a festival, and I think that was where some of the confusion got in.
Right. Now, this is the revised policy that we are going to potentially adopt tonight, but I don't think it quite goes far enough in defining it.
Well, so, there are two revisions tonight? There are, I'm sorry, there are two drafts tonight?
No.
What's the second one that says draft policy?
So, this one here, that says draft policy, was Exhibit A, and in the memo before that, it said that that was the one that Attorney Rota Wyman initially presented back in 2015. So that's what the board originally reviewed.
Right.
They discussed it, said that they didn't want the word "festival" in it because it was too restrictive, voted on making it more open, so that's what Exhibit C is. And then, two weeks ago, we heard that you wanted it more restrictive, so we went essentially back to the original version that was presented to the board, because we weren't really sure what you wanted.
Okay. Let's hope so.
And as written, my concern, with "festival" back in it, my concern is, something like the Wine Festival is a festival. It would be, you know, you'd be hard-pressed to say no. And then something else, pick like, NHA's 350th anniversary. Well, that's not a festival, so you can't do it. And I just think it should be sort of the opposite. We shouldn't be doing the, you know, the for-profit or the big fundraising things. We should be, if we're going to do it, we should be doing the 50th stroll or the 350th year of Nantucket. We should be doing the right things. Otherwise, it becomes sign pollution, and none of them are noticed, so.
Is it something where maybe a future policy might have a limitation on the number of events or applicants in a year? So then, and they have to apply, because if it's your 350th anniversary, you know it well in advance, so you can apply at the beginning of the year, and you get them sorted out so that we can prioritize or decide. I think it's difficult to leave it open to applicant, but then try and come up with a list of restrictions that then clarify who will and won't be allowed to hang banners. But I agree that it's, it's not ready. I don't think "festival" is the right, I don't think the draft revision or the original policy really suits what we're trying to do.
Yeah. We could potentially limit the number per year, and maybe they have to apply in, between January and, January 1st and April 1st, to be able to hang them over the summer, so that there's plenty of time in between. These are just thoughts. I mean, I think that we need to have more discussion on it. I don't.
Another option is, we could have a moratorium tonight. Would be another option if we were, so we really create some momentum to getting this revised.
Erica?
I was just going to note, too, that your current policy states that they have to go through the Sign Advisory Committee and the HDC before they can even come to you, so they're already going through work.
Yeah.
And expending money and time.
That's my concern with denying anyone who's already before us. We could put a moratorium now, that nothing that's not on our agenda tonight going forward. I'm assuming, I don't think there's anything else in the works.
Not that we've been made aware of. There's a chicken-and-an-egg kind of thing here, a little bit, because if they're going to go through the hassle of the HDC and the Sign Committee, and before they come to you, they don't know if you're going to approve their thing or not, so that might be something.
Yeah, we have the right not to approve it, regardless of where that, okay.
This has somehow become more, sort of, an unintended consequence kind of a thing here, because not everybody knows how to hang these things, so it became apparent recently that there seemed to be an expectation that the DPW does hang them, and that there are fasteners there already, and they, and there aren't. So if we're going to sort of standardize that, then, you know, DPW, especially in the middle of the summer, has many, many other things to do besides hang banners and take banners down. So a fee might help with that, but it doesn't get the time back for that activity.
So how do we move this along?
I think we're going to need to draft another policy. Does anyone have a semi-clear idea of what they'd like in it, in terms of the parameters?
Maybe what we're asking is to go back to the prior policy, which meant that we really didn't do this, and it only happened on a very rare occasion, and they had to come in here and beg on their hands and knees. I mean, maybe, that may be a policy, because if you try to write a policy, it's like when I tried to write a policy for my employees, you can't put common, you can't write common sense into it. You can't write every single thing they do, you know? And when someone is, so, so maybe we should just be saying, you know, this is, we're not going to do this, except on a very rare occasion, and let, and sort of leave it at that. You know, that's sort of how we did it in the past, and, you know, we could, a lot of it, we could just go, nah, it's not special enough, and just not even get to it. Because I think we sort of opened the floodgate. If I could go back, I made a mistake when I voted, and that's the first time, I should have voted against it. I should, I made a mistake. And it was 3-2, and it was a close vote, so.
Is it possible for them to get our approval and then go to the HDC and the Sign Committee? And our approval is contingent on that their sign is approved by both committees? I don't, I mean, I think that makes more sense, because of the time and expenditure. I think if there's a way to say, we don't hang banners on Main Street unless it is very, very special and people do come, I, I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, it could, a potential change could be, rather than once every five years, it has to be once every 25 years. So it could be the 25th anniversary, the 50th anniversary of something. And I think that it can't be for any kind of advertising purpose, even if it's a nonprofit fundraiser.
Yeah, that's.
It just, it really needs to be like a special anniversary for something. It really needs to become a special anniversary for something, rather than, there could be a sign up constantly, all summer, and it's more than one sign.
All right, with the current policy, there could be a sign up every week. Just no one's, right? Could be, potentially. So we need to rein it in somehow. Right, right.
Right.
That's true.
But the way we've got it currently set up, it's a little bit unfair to let them go through the whole HDC process, design something, potentially even have it on order, because I'm sure that you can't have these just made tomorrow and then get done up, so that's.
I like the idea of reversing it. That solves a lot of problems.
And I think something along the lines of looking at, at the start of the year, all the applications, there's a timeframe. There's a consistent style or size or way to hang, and we just, we put a limit.
And we're only on the size.
The size, yeah. Well, whatever the, wherever the issue is with things being hung differently, then we define that further.
So just to see what the tenor of the board is, I'd make a motion that we change the order of the application, and ask the applicant to come to the Board of Selectment first, and that we put in place a moratorium effective tonight for banners on Main Street.
A moratorium for, or until we define a policy?
That's my motion, then you can, so.
Just a moratorium?
A moratorium, yep. I mean, a moratorium can be, moratorium can be, as of today, it can be time-sensitive, I'm just saying a moratorium.
I'm just wondering if the intent is to bring it back for a refined policy, or to just ban?
Well, I didn't get to that point.
Or to just ban them.
But that's my motion, so.
Well, I guess we're asking to clarify the motion.
Yeah, because I can't vote for that if I don't understand it.
Yeah. So I'm asking, clarify, is that?
If there's a second, we can talk about it, so.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, all right.
So is the intent to put a moratorium in place before the applicant tonight?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then, that's one question. The second one is, is the moratorium permanent, or is the moratorium till?
Well, a moratorium is effective until this board, you know, lifts it. I mean, that's, if we, if we impose it, then this board would lift it, so. And I'm hoping that that would encourage us to resolve it, so people aren't out there thinking they can have these banners and go to some extra work to, to make that happen.
On the motion?
I mean, I would, can you amend it now, or do you?
You can have a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
The first two parts, I agree with the moratorium. I would amend it to put a date on coming up with a draft policy and reviewing it, but I would not put the moratorium in until tomorrow. I agree with Don, that it's unfair that, based on an unclear policy, the policy that we have, and based on our approval of the Small Friends, that the Preservation Trust has spent time and money, and we've been somewhat misguiding them with an unclear policy if we were to ban theirs tonight. My amendment would be, moratorium start tomorrow, and we have a date on when to review a draft of the revised policy.
I'll second that.
Are you okay with that, Jim?
No.
Okay. So, well, let's take a vote on Jim's motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. So that does not carry. Does someone want to make a revised motion?
Yes. Motion to, let's say, to put a limit on the number that we can have in a year, to have the applicants come to us first before going to HDC and Sign Committee, to, and then a moratorium that starts tomorrow. I think I covered them all.
Until we get the.
That starts tomorrow?
Starts tomorrow.
For any new applications?
For any new applications.
Until the policy's figured out.
Until the policy is reviewed.
And we'll bring it back at the next available meeting.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four to one. Okay. So now we do have the request from the Preservation Trust. Michael, did you want to come up?
Hi, I'm Michael May. I'm the Executive Director of the Nantucket Preservation Trust, and we have applied for a ban before, so this was a new thing for us. And actually, I attended two meetings, the Sign Committee and then also the HDC. But in terms of hanging, it is our 20th anniversary. We were founded in 1997, so we thought this was a special time, and that it might, would be appropriate to apply for it. We were concerned about hanging the signs, and we actually contacted Cottage Hospital because we knew that they had a similar sign for the Pops last year, and I think that looked better, how it was hung on the poles, and they offered to allow us to use their hangers. So I think they will look better than the ones that were recently hung.
Are your signs already made?
They're not already made, but they've been designed, yeah.
Would you be willing to just say "Celebrating 20 Years of the Nantucket Preservation Trust" and strike the antiques show portion?
I think it really gets to your point about celebrating major anniversaries rather than promoting fundraisers.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, I mean, the antique shows, I always thought is a festival. I mean, it's not, we're associated with it, but we're not the organizers of that, that
Oh, it's not sponsored by you?
I mean, we're, we're part of it. We're sponsoring the preview party, and.
Oh, it's even, it's even further distanced.
It's the Antiques Council, though, correct?
It's the Antiques Council.
And they do support.
Yeah, we're, we're working with them.
Yeah, and they do support island.
I mean, I guess you would have to go back to HDC now, so it's not very realistic for August 8th.
Yeah, the wording was a little different before, but the Sign Committee changed the wording, so.
Yeah, I understand where you're going, Don, but I'm happy with it here, with the moratorium in place, but I think that we really do need to refine it, because I think the intent, and I would, you know, I think, you know, 20 years of Preservation Nantucket's a great thing to be supporting and hanging, putting a banner on. I'm not so sure, trying to get people from Main Street to 61 Sparks Ave is sort of the intent, so in the future, hopefully, we won't do that. But I'm willing to go for what that is, and I'll make that motion.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public hearings have some utility.
Jim Huxley, National Grid.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Oh, I'm opening the public hearing.
Yeah, this is just for a, to run some conduit across the boulevard. They've actually already did it. They did it before the paving was in, and this is for a new home at 23 Boulevard.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the audience who wishes to speak, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, as long as it follows all the recommendations.
It's already done.
Oh, it's done? Well, that's the one that's done. So I make a motion to do it. Accept it. Accept what's done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number two, we'll open the pub, I did, we'll open the public hearing.
Which one's this for?
This is 303 Pulpus Road. With a cranberry bog pump.
Yes, this is a cranberry bog. They're looking for a new electric service, and they're going to be running along, along the main road for 50 feet, and then they're going to directional tunnel under the bike path. And that's for a new electric service to the cranberry bogs.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the audience, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, yes, of course.
Has this work already been done?
Excuse me?
Has this work already been done, or is it to be done?
Pulpus hasn't been done.
Move approval?
Just to clarify, though, that it'll, there'll be the directional, direct, what is it, the directional drilling under the bike path?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next one is 137 Old South Road. Open the public hearing.
Yes, this is for a new commercial building. They're going to be going along the roadway for a new electric service, and 100 feet of conduit.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last one, 15 and 1/2 Maya Comet Avenue.
This is another new electric service to a new home. They're going to be directional drilling under the street to a handhole on their property, and I have no idea if they have done it already.
Okay. It's a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Number five, we will open the public hearing. There is a request to continue all of these until the August 23rd meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then, number six, we'll open the public hearing. We had a late letter from, in a butter, so the, we were going to suggest to continue to August 23rd on just A, not B.
Good evening. This, I'm Eleanor Antoniadi, standing in for Andrew Vorse, who is away from the office. Are you talking about the L Street taking?
Yes.
Does it happen to be from, may I name the person I think it's from, with whom I spoke this evening?
Um, probably.
Yes, I spoke with her on the phone.
It was in my box, and Town Administration had been have it.
Okay, I spoke with her this evening. She has spoken with me Thursday last week, and then I spoke to Andrew to clarify some things. So her concern was to be able to reserve the right to eventually, if needed, run her sewer connection down L Street, which will not be a problem. All of that will take place during the disposition, and I spoke with her on the phone, live and in person tonight, and she was very reassuring.
So it's been resolved.
So it's been resolved, and it will be dealt with at the time of disposition. Anything like that, any easements that are reserved for pedestrian access or anything like that, they are built into the deeds or separate documents of record.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't know if she'd been addressed.
Yes, yes.
We didn't really say in the letter, it was very brief, just that she had concerns.
No, no, she probably, yes, it's all good.
Okay, so, number six, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on A or B? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Do we do this one?
Yeah, we did A and B.
Bob Williams is here of the Nantucket Pond Coalition. Bob has undertaken a real effort to try to coordinate a lot of different groups, including town groups and departments, to better maintain and oversee the island's ponds. He has a short video to show, and he's just intending to give a brief update about the coalition's activities.
I dropped all my pages. Thank you, Libby, and thank you. I'm Bob Williams, and she said, really appreciate the chance to update you briefly on what we've been doing. The video will show here, and then I'll be the audio, so you'll have to sort of have a stereo experience. You'll see a swan, you'll see a map, you'll see a logo where I explain our structure, and then you'll see short videos of our, of our, you'll see short-- Is that better? Should I start over? All right, you'll see short videos of what we've done. The whole thing's less than five minutes. So, does that sound good? Okay, great. Erica, let's do it. The ponds on Nantucket have been with us a very long time, roughly 12,000 years. They were initially created by the Laurenti Glacier and then formed, as you know them today, roughly 6,000 years ago, when the seas rose and created the Cape and Islands and Long Island. Here's a map of the 80-plus named ponds on Nantucket, not counting ponds on private property. After 6,000 years, one might ask, why is a pond restoration initiative needed now? The answer is that explosive population has fast-forwarded the pond's eutrophication by many, many decades. Even with searing and fertilizer management, the amount of phosphorus and nitrogen currently on the bottom of the ponds is so excessive that significant restoration measures are required. Virtual meadows are now growing on the bottom of our ponds. Our family has lived on Hummock Pond facing Sanford Farm for 17 years. We have a small skiff that we used to use to fish and take excursions to Cisco Beach. As you can see from these Hummock Pond images, the pond has become so utropic that we can no longer easily use the skiff at all. The annual explosion of biomass pretty much precludes any fishing or navigation on the pond. So in May of 2014, we launched the Nantucket Pond Coalition. The vision was to create political momentum through an island-wide pond restoration effort funded through public-private partnerships. We asked that each new pond work group elect a designated neighbor who would accept responsibility for the success of that project. Also, that each project be funded with both municipal funds and private donations. The land bank, the town, and CPC have all made contributions to our projects. We now have five active project groups and hundreds of donor names on our mailing list. We work with Community Foundation for Nantucket, and they keep our books. Our restoration focus is to restore the water itself, which includes reducing vegetation and algae blooms, and to remove invasive plants, in particular invasive phragmities, and the recolonization of those areas with native plants. Here's a look at Long Pond. As you can see, the water, over rich in nutrients, is way out of balance with the natural state. The scum you see in the water is a witch's brew of rooted seeded plants, algae mats, filamentsis agents algae, and phytoplankton of great variety, all of which deplete oxygen and thus create great stress for all that live and reproduce in that ecosystem. The muck and scum also degrades the aesthetic beauty and navigability of the pond, as you can see from the kayak trails made through the scum. Given our focus on harmful blue-green algae blooms, here's an advisory board meeting with Libby and Brian to review a town submission for a Federal Clean Water Act grant. As a result, the town won $32,000 from the feds to study the sources of phosphorus in My Comet and Hummock Ponds. Last summer, Emily Molden at the Land Council sampled groundwater in 30 locations, sediment in 14 locations, and dissolved oxygen in eight locations. We learned that excessive phosphorus comes not from septic or fertilizer, although mitigating these sources remain important, but from the bottom of the ponds themselves. This will help direct our restoration measures in the future. Given these degraded water conditions, our first project was to launch an aquatic harvester on Hummock Pond to harvest excess vegetation. Over a four-day period, we extracted 32,000 pounds of vegetation from the water table and recycled it as fertilizer on Bartlett's farm. The harvester will return August 16 of this year for another go. As for invasive phragmities removal, we conducted a pilot program to foliar spray these plants. Using backpacks, in 2015, we treated a third of an acre on phragmities on Long Pond. We are in year three of a multi-year campaign, and it appears we have eliminated 95% of the plants to date. We also see that recolonization of the native plants is well underway. Given the success of that pilot, we then tackled over four acres of phragmities on Madiket Land Trust property on Long Pond by spraying the plants from an amphibious marsh master. All four acres were treated in a single half-day in September 2016, and the mulching of the dead stocks was done in a day and a half that December. A CPC grant of $25,000 covered the cost of the project. Year-two spray will be done this September 11 through 13. Nantucket could use a marsh master and aquatic harvester of its own. The cost of leasing and transporting the machines over time exceeds the cost of the island owning and operating its own. The final project I have to share is our Otho-Photo Mosaic mapping project. We brought in a certified drone pilot to photograph invasives along the shorelines of our major ponds. These detailed photo mosaics have been imported into the town GIS system so invasive acreage can be accurately calculated by property owner. As one result, 20 residents of Hummock Pond have raised a proportional 26,000 for a group effort to remove invasive phragmities on the southeast shore of Hummock Pond next fall. Thank you for taking pond conservation issues seriously. Water for Nantucket is indeed infrastructure, just like good roads or extended sewer or a new hospital. We are very happy with the support we have received from the town. We are now benefiting from regular meetings with the appropriate town departments to comprehensively drive island-wide watershed and pond management restoration, decide which new projects to undertake, and decide whether and when to purchase the equipment necessary to do this restoration work. Thanks for listening. We're working together to restore and protect one of the key natural resources on Nantucket, the unique and fragile glacial brackish ponds. Future generations, including families like these, depend on it. So, the work continues this summer. There are meetings on Hummock Long and My Comet Pond butters over the summer, and the Natural Resource Department will propose to put a comprehensive plan together with us in the fall. The marsh master returns to Long Island and Hummock Pond. Work is underway, permitting additional work in 2018 in Long and My Comet Pond, and we'll be addressing the options available and choosing the best ones. I also invite you to join us at 4:00 PM Saturday, August 19, for a wine and cheese reception on the shores of Hummock Pond to demonstrate the aquatic harvester. That's Saturday, August 19 at 4:00 PM off of Hummock Pond Road. There'll be signs. Come, have a drink, and watch your pond restoration at work. And thank you for your ongoing support. We really do appreciate it, and it's very important to us. I also have, if it's okay, a thank-you hat. If you're, if I'm allowed to give you a hat? Am I allowed to do that? It's under $50. Libby said okay. Any questions?
Great presentation. Like the video--
I want to thank you for all your efforts.
Yeah, absolutely. It was really good.
Well, thanks, Matt. I've really enjoyed it. We met a lot of really cool people, and it's amazing how many people care about these ponds, even if they don't live on them. Most of our donors are not pond butters. So, thank you all, and thank you for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
These are great hats for great fall in the summer.
Thank you so much.
Nice logo, too. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Great crowd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thanks so much.
You already have.
I don't know. Thank you. Thank you very much, Bob. And I really want to thank Bob, too, because he's been very, very helpful and good to work with, so thanks. Our second item under Town Manager's Report is a couple of traffic safety work group recommendations. The first has to do with removing some parking from the west side of Ash Street, across from a driveway, via a yellow line. And I think this was a neighbor-generated, property owner-generated request.
Correct. Correct. Discussion?
I guess the issue is they have trouble getting out of their driveway because of the, is it a new driveway?
So it was a curb cut that was created prior to the owners purchasing this property. And they, the new owners have found it very difficult to get in and out. Marion--
Yeah, I represent the owners of five Ash Street. They purchased the property in January, and it had been extensively renovated before they bought it. There wasn't a driveway before the renovation, and the building department had them put in a couple of parking spaces in the driveway. But the problem is, you can't get out of the driveway if there's a car parked across the street because it's so narrow. That black car is my car. And if that space behind the red car hadn't been free, I would not have been able to get out of the driveway because I would have hit the red car. And I thought that maybe if I pulled forward and drove it, I mean, backed into the driveway, that would solve the problem. It doesn't, unfortunately, solve it. So I think that, you know, we talked to Traffic Safety, and I know they went up there, and they evaluated it. And I think they gave us a positive recommendation.
Okay. Does anyone have any concerns or comments?
Oh, I have some concerns. I grew up, the house that you can see up on the corner, and it's sort of, I'm saddened that we're turning all the gardens and side yards into parking yards. They're no longer gardens anymore. And then when we do that, so we've lost the nice downtown gardens because they've, because we have poor parking management, and therefore, people have to have cuts and have private driveways. But then when they have the private driveway, they take away parking for the customer, for other people. So I just, I think we've gone, you know, and we've gone so far down this path. I'm going to vote against this. I'm guessing it's going to pass. But I just think we've gone so far down this path. I would like to think someday we will value parking spaces and that we will start to have our side yards turned back into gardens and yards rather than parking lots. Because it's, it's just, it is not in keeping. That was a big, open yard that we all played in as a kid, and it's turned into, you know, parking, and it's just, it's sad. Anyway.
Well, I think we lose a town spot because of bad design. And someone bought it based on the fact that there's a curb cut. And I don't know how wide it is or how many cars, but definitely see this in the work that I do day-to-day. But there's a lot of bad design choices that end up in the town losing something, so. I mean, having a parking space, if they were the only ones using that parking space and now that, you know, they can park off the road and it was actually opening up a spot, that would be one thing, but it's actually, towns lost private benefit.
The town has lost two spots.
I can address that. The DPW actually approved the curb cut. And the driveway accommodates two, possibly three cars, depending on what size they are, so it's kind of a, you know, it's basically a wash.
In the DPW's defense, though, they approved it because the application stated there was no parking to be removed. That's the only reason why it didn't come back here to the Board of Selectment, because it was stated on the application it wouldn't require that.
Yeah, I believe that the former owner, the way that the application was worded, there was no parking to be removed on that side, the house side of Ash Street. But the whole issue of physically, logistically getting out of the driveway--
It's the opposite side of the street, right?
You can't, you can't back out of it if there's cars there. You simply cannot back out.
And there was no driveway, existing driveway, prior to that? That's the first--
No, there was never a driveway there. So the cars that were at that house were parking on the street.
Jim?
So this is a new driveway that the new owners put in, and I would assume that they would have had, you know, engineering or some kind of design of parking that would preclude the need for coming forward and removing additional parking spaces. I mean, just the approval of a curb cut doesn't mean that you'll have, you have to implement it and have X amount of parking spaces. So I, I, those are my concerns that I raised, would raise.
If I may, the prior owner actually put that in, and the whole thing that drives this is the building code and the zoning requirements that you're supposed to provide off-street parking.
I'm in the middle of doing exactly that on Fairgrounds Road. I have to have, in order to have a shared parking lot, I have to have easements between the different lots. And I wanted to do basically a co-housing with, you know, a 20-space parking lot and then have the houses separate so people aren't living next to their cars. It's a really nice layout, and that's not what we're asking for. At the building department, we're asking for everyone to have their own driveway and parking everywhere. So, you're correct.
So when work was done on the house, that's when it had to be brought up?
That's when they brought it up, yeah. And, you know, in my client's defense, I mean, they saw the property in the fall, and I'm assuming there probably weren't any cars parked on the street. So you wouldn't--
Is this because it was an inn prior? So it was a change of use to a residence, and that's why the parking got triggered? Okay.
And is it normally DPW who would approve the curb cut, and then HDC approves the--
Yeah, I mean-- Go ahead. So curb cuts go to the, go to the building department. They are supposed to have an HDC-approved driveway plan to submit with it. They can go ahead and sign off on those unless it eliminates a parking space. If it requires the elimination of a parking space, it goes to you first. And before it goes to you, it actually goes to Traffic Safety for its recommendation. We are having another issue like this on Fayette, which is going to be coming to you shortly also. And I know that the Deputy DPW Director has said that he would like some engineering done with these curb cuts so that we avoid these types of issues. So they know ahead of time, yes, we do need to eliminate a parking space, so you don't approve it, and then they have to come back. So that is in the works, but right now, we've got a couple of situations where, you know, they're just trying to figure things out.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I agree with Erica, but, Matt, you grew up over here. You know how narrow this street is. And the other night, I mean, you know, putting aside the whole driveway issue, it was pretty difficult for me to drive down that road with the cars parked all along the other side. It's extremely narrow.
It is hard to even pass that road--
And my client's concern is, they come home at night, they park in the driveway, and then one of the kids gets sick, and 2:00 in the morning, they want to get in the car and go to the emergency room. They can't get out of the driveway. It's that simple. So all we're asking is just to have a fairly small area across the street blocked off with a yellow line. And I think the DPW also recommended moving one of the no-parking spaces a different, in a different direction, which would help to free up more parking on that side of the street.
So there's a potential to create--
There's a potential, yeah.
A little bit of parking room.
There's a no-parking sign that could easily be moved forward, you know, eight to 10 feet, which might free up a little bit more area for parking. And that's part of their recommendation.
Do we know that for a fact?
It's in their recommendation, I believe.
Erica, you know?
So it doesn't mention the other, moving the no-parking--
It doesn't mention adding. Okay. It doesn't mention adding. Okay. All right. So it's a net loss of 20 feet.
I mean, the end reality here is that these people have a house and they're going to park. And they'd be driving around trying to find a space on the street too. And probably too, if there's room for two cars in the driveway. So.
So Erica, Traffic Safety recommended this?
They recommended it.
Is it a safety issue or just a?
It's a traffic issue.
Yeah, we went to the meeting and then they went out and they actually did a site evaluation because they wanted to see it.
But we're not taking, taking it away. It's already done. We can, we can talk about whether it should be there or not or how it got there. But-
It's, it's not, I mean, the driveway's already there.
That's what I mean.
And the parking is still there. So you would be taking the two parking spaces away?
Right, on the street.
And taking it away from the public.
One parking.
Taken away from public use.
20 feet, one space.
20 feet. It's a legal space.
Seventeen?
It's seven by 17 for a small one and nine by-
By 20.
Yeah.
So it's the 20 length.
But the car isn't 20 feet. That's 20 so you can back out of the space. So on-street parking, it would be probably approximately two spaces disappear. Your car isn't 20 feet long.
Cars are 15 to 17. Like a Jeep is 15. So it's kind of a car and a bit. But I would say it's probably count, I'm not quite sure. But I would say that 20 feet is probably one parking space.
I don't like taking pub, parking away from public. But Traffic Safety looked at it. I trust them. They look at this stuff in detail. So I like making a motion to approve what the Traffic Safety is recommending for Ash Street.
I'll second it.
Is there a way to reduce the 20 feet to some smaller number to really maybe give a few feet for other parking spaces?
I would say that the transportation planner is the chairman. He looked at this with Traffic Safety, which includes other entities or other departments. They, that is their recommendation that they felt was a good length to do this.
Can we follow up with the moving the no parking sign forward to gain the eight, 10 feet? Yeah. Okay.
Well, we could, if you want to bring it back, we'll find out more about that.
Yeah, I thought, I had the email from Matt where they talked about moving that sign as well. I, I can't find it in. Because I know that we talked about that specifically because there's a utility pole and, you know, there's a, there's a space between the no parking sign that's here and the driveway that starts here. And I said they could actually move the no parking sign forward because there's, you know, six or seven feet of space that can't be used because of the sign.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
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 Okay.
So three no's and one yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you guys want to hold it over to see about moving that sign to create more space?
Ultimately, I would like to-
Bring it back.
Yeah, bring it back. Ultimately, I would like to say yes because I think it's not-
Okay. Well, then rather, let's bring it back then. Because as I said, I know that in the email that Matt sent me, Matt Burns sent me about the, what the Traffic Safety Committee recommended, it also talked about moving that sign. And I don't have it in my file. And apparently it didn't get to Erica. But I didn't make it up.
If we can, I mean, that sounds like that would be a compromise.
Because it's, as I said, it's, it's impossible to get out of that driveway. I tried. My client's got a Jeep Wrangler. It's even smaller than my car. And it just doesn't work if there's a car parked directly across it. That's all we're asking for is about 10, we are asking about 10 or 12 feet across from the driveway. The recommendation from Traffic Safety was longer.
When was the driveway installed?
Excuse me?
When was the driveway installed?
2000, between '15 and '16. The approval was in 2015. I'm not sure exactly when they put the driveway.
So it was, okay, so it's been there for a couple of years, two or three years?
No, it's probably-
Maybe a year.
A year, okay.
Maybe a year and a year and a half. But, you know, contractors were in and out of there in the winter. The house wasn't occupied last summer. And it's real, it's the summer traffic. That's the problem. If there's nobody there, you can get in and out. But if there's cars there, you cannot get out of there.
Does someone want to make a motion to hold this over to our next meeting for more information?
I'll make a motion to hold it over until next meeting.
No.
Well, that just, that failed.
I think you just add it to the agenda when it's ready to come back, rather than-
Yeah. Or next meeting or when it's ready.
Whenever it's ready.
Do we need a motion for that effect?
No.
I think we do need a motion because the other motion failed.
No, we don't. You can just add it to the agenda when you want to.
I think we should take a vote.
Yeah, move we table the action for more information so that we can vote positively.
Second.
All those in favor?
So, I'm sorry, confused. We already voted no.
No, now we're just gonna, we're gonna bring it back. We got more information.
So it's, so it's, is it still on the table? No. It's off, we voted no. So it's no longer on the table to take action.
It was a positive motion that failed. Then you can make another motion to do something different with it. So that was, that was what I was going for.
I want to make sure it comes, I want it to come back.
So it can come back.
I don't think we should say no. I think it should come back. But I think we should-
I didn't want to take the failure as just a no, you can't have it. There's no other option. Okay. We're clear?
My intent is that it comes back with more information.
So that's why I wanted another motion to bring it back with more information.
And we can understand?
Yes. Yes.
We didn't vote on it. But go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Excuse me for the confusion. And then we do have another recommendation from Traffic Safety on a loading zone on India Street. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Traffic Safety reviewed a request from a business owner on India Street to extend the time of the loading zone, which is on the south side of India Street at the corner of India and Federal. A couple of years ago, you all had some discussions about that with Andy Willauer. And basically, what's happening right now is the loading zone ends at noon and there's still afternoon deliveries that come through. And those delivery trucks are being forced to park in the street and blocking traffic potentially sometimes or making it difficult to get around. So the idea was that if the loading zone time was extended, those trucks would have a place to park in the afternoon and hopefully alleviate some of those traffic congestion problems on India.
Discussion, questions, comments?
Was the request coming from the same gentleman that requested it two years ago?
No.
Okay. Another property owner? You said a property owner, a business owner is asking for?
Mr. Willauer was the one that we originally talked to in this, but somebody different who just said that, you know, his biggest issue was the traffic congestion and how it backs up traffic. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but Cape Cod Express has trucks that, they have tractor trailers that come in. They unload all the material into smaller trucks at their warehouse. And then the smaller trucks go out. But it takes almost all day for them to sort it all and everything. So their trucks don't go out until the afternoon. And by then, it's very difficult to find parking. So I know that that is one of the bigger issues with those types of trucks.
It's a pleasure.
Motion to approve?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One, one comment. I've been around long enough that I remember when we instituted these 20 years ago, we added new ones. The whole goal was to get everything done in the morning and get people out of town. The world has changed. There's, you know, instant delivery with Amazon. And there are bigger trucks because that are, you know, they can't even use these. If you watch downtown, they can't even use these spaces. They pull up wherever they can pull up to unload. And I think we've sort of, we veered away from trying to get everyone out of town by 11 or 12. And it's, they're kind of there a lot now. So I don't know that there's any much we can do. But I, it can, I will say it's very different from the intent 20 years ago.
Did that pass?
I think, it did. It passed unanimously. I mean, I, yeah, I do think unfortunately so much stuff's being delivered and nothing's guaranteed until 5 o'clock. So, problem with all those packages. But we'll move on.
Okay, next, we're ready to move on. We have a discussion about special town meeting warrant articles for the November 6th special town meeting. There's a list in your packet shown on the screen there. And just to take you all through these, this, we, as we know, the special town meeting was called in the first place to address the retail marijuana situation. And we have Katie Lofman from Copeland Page here to answer any questions and to give a bit of an update for you about the legislation, which I think was enacted today. So maybe we start with that. I think with the board's discussion so far has been whether or not to put a zoning bylaw amendment on the special town meeting, which would restrict where the establishments could be located, or seek approval for a temporary moratorium until a date certain, at which time we would bring forward a zoning bylaw amendment. There's been a little bit of discussion about an outright ban, which will require more than a town meeting vote. So Katie, if, if it's all right with all of you, if Katie can maybe give an overview?
I thought we'd all agreed to move forward with a zoning bylaw amendment rather than a moratorium and an outright ban. But maybe not.
I think that that's the page we were all on. But I think there's some new information that might be helpful and some possible new recommendations from Town Council.
All right, good.
Good evening. So as Libby mentioned, I'm here to provide an update on the legislative amendments with respect to recreational marijuana. There is a House bill that reconciled competing House and Senate bills, which today was just accepted. The conference committee report and a formal vote is going to happen probably tomorrow or Friday. It, the, it was unanimous acceptance of that report. So it looks like what has been proposed as the, the House bill will pass and will be signed into law. So it's, it's not a wholesale repeal of, of the ballot measure that passed as Article 4 last November. It includes a number of amendments and clarifications of that measure. And it also consolidates the recreational marijuana with the medical marijuana under the control of what will be known as the Cannabis Control Commission. So there, there are some changes in the way that recreational and medical marijuana will be handled on an administrative level statewide. So the Cannabis Control Commission is, the, the scope of that has been expanded with respect to who will be appointed. But it is instructed to largely retain the Department of Public Health regulatory scheme with respect to the medical side of things with a few exceptions. As of right now, this new Cannabis Control Commission will be charged with adopting regulations for both the medical and recreational side of things, with the timeline of that slated to be the same as was under Article 4. So that puts regulations being adopted in March of next year, initial applications being filed as of April 1st next year, with the first licenses for recreational marijuana to be issued no earlier than June 1st of next year. With respect to the Department of Public Health regulations, we can expect, based on the changes in the law, to see the Cannabis Control Commission making some changes. But there's a requirement that nothing be imposed that is any more stringent or strict than what is currently in place with respect to the medical side of things. I will also note that there is a provision in there which requires special regulations and accommodations for Nantucket. And those are slated to be adopted no later than May 1st of 2018. So those will potentially come out a little bit later than the state regulations. And it's unclear exactly what those will be at this time. But I think they're going to be looking sort of at the special circumstances attendant to, to Nantucket.
Katie, I'm sorry, for transport is what?
Likely transport is going to be what is, what is implicated there. It's not specific in, in the legislation. It just says special regulations and accommodations. So there are a few changes with respect to the local control section, which we discussed the last time I was here. So the way that this is going to proceed is they're going to take a look back at how specific communities voted with respect to the ballot provision in November. If you were a community that voted yes on question four, then in order to do any kind of a ban or limitation on the recreational establishments, there's a requirement that this go to a ballot question provision that, that goes to the voters. So Nantucket was a community that voted yes. So that ballot requirement with respect to bans or limitations would be effective here. In the case of communities who voted no, they have a two-year window in which to enact bans or limitations simply by bylaw without the ballot vote. But then after a two-year period, all communities will be treated the same with respect to requiring a ballot to prohibit or ban. So as opposed to the last round of legislation, we have, this bill gives guidance with respect to the form of the ballot vote. So that makes it a little bit clearer. The other local control changes that were a result of this House bill includes language that makes it easier for the existing recreational marijuana dispensaries to convert to recreational use. Prior to this amendment, there was language that said you could not establish a bylaw that prohibited operation in the same area. Now there's specific language that says you cannot have a bylaw prohibiting the conversion of a recreational marijuana, a medical marijuana facility to a recreational marijuana facility. So that is one significant change. The new amendments give some specific direction with respect to the adopting of host community agreements. As you're aware, in the, on the medical side of things, most communities were entering into these types of agreements and receiving payments of community impact fees. Those agreements are still allowed under this new legislation. But the payments will be capped to no more than 3% of sales. And they have to be related to the community impact and proportionate to the, to the community impact. Those agreements will also have a limit of five years. The language seems to indicate those could be renegotiated after a period of five years. But, but all agreements would have an initial five-year lifespan. So those are the major local control changes under this new legislation. And, and the question is where does that leave the community? That's still a fairly significant unsettled question at this point in time with respect to the scope and nature of the regulations that will be enacted by the Cannabis Control Commission. In the ballot question that was initially adopted and in this amendment, there is a fairly extensive list of the, the areas in which regulations need to be adopted. Everything from advertising to the licensing scheme, to packaging, issues with respect to cultivation and testing. There will be a comprehensive legislative scheme adopted by the Cannabis Control Commission to implement this law. But we're not going to know what that is until next March. So many communities, even those that have, that are intending to proceed with zoning bylaws and regulations that will allow recreational marijuana facilities, have adopted moratoriums in order to give some time to the planning staff, to the Boards of Selectment, to the executive, to take a look at these regulations once they are promulgated, to see the scope of, of what those are and the areas that may potentially be, be relegated to local control, or whether the scheme preempts certain areas that towns have traditionally taken with respect to land use. There is like specific language that allows for the regulation of time, place, and manner by local authority. And, and that certainly gives the town a certain amount of discretion with respect to how it will regulate marijuana. But there will be a certain amount of interplay between how the state regulates and, and what the municipality will be able to do on the regulatory front. The recommendation that we have made to most communities at this point in time is that a zoning moratorium for a limited time period, most of which are extending to December 31st of 2018, would be a reasonable way to allow municipalities a chance to evaluate the regulations once those are adopted and determine whether there are areas of local control that have been specifically delegated to the, to the town, and whether there are issues that the town would like to regulate through its bylaw or regulatory schemes. Absent that, if there is no moratorium in place, then as of April 1st, 2018, whatever zoning is in place at that time will be what controls any applicant who submits an application as of that date. So if the town is not going to go forward with a moratorium, a limited time moratorium, it should be looking at what regulatory action it would like to take in advance of, of- it should be looking at what regulatory action it would like to take in advance of the first round of applicants next April. If nothing is in place, then it would be basically everything open in terms of where you could apply and locate under the current legislation.
A question. So last time your recommendation was that we move forward with a zoning bylaw amendment.
I believe my recommendation last time was a moratorium as well.
But do, but move forward with an amendment, a zoning bylaw amendment, not just a moratorium.
So the moratorium takes the form of a zoning bylaw amendment. It's adopted by two-thirds vote at town meeting, just like a regular zoning bylaw, but it has a date certain with respect to when it expires.
Right, but last time we were, you know, we led to believe, I believe that we needed to find, create a zone where these, where the retail establishments can operate. And now what I hear you saying is that, don't do that, or go do, or continue to do that and put that on the warrant.
So absolutely, if you're going to be allowing marijuana for recreational sales within the town, you need to ultimately have adopted a zoning bylaw that determines what areas those can locate in, probably a special permit or site plan or design review process that those applicants are subject to. My recommendation is that absent having reviewed these regulations, which have not yet been promulgated, it's sort of difficult to know the full scope of how you want to regulate.
Right.
And so a moratorium allows for time in which to review the regulations, establish your planning policy and goals, and then adopt your zoning scheme prior to the expiration of the moratorium. And at that point in time, once your moratorium expires, applicants can come in under whatever zoning you've adopted in the meantime.
And then what triggered your change in the recommendation to just do the moratorium via zoning bylaw amendment?
I don't think it's changed.
I don't think that there's a change in my recommendation. I apologize if you were led to believe otherwise. There are certain, I mean, there are different paths municipalities can take at this juncture. One is to adopt a zoning moratorium on a temporary basis in which to allow time to study the issue, review the regulations, and then later adopt your regulatory scheme. The second path you can take is to ban or limit retail or marijuana establishments, and that is your ballot-by-law combination vote. If you are not going to ban or limit, then you want to establish a zoning regulatory scheme that addresses where these facilities can locate and how you're going to go about permitting them. So those are sort of your three tracks, but the zoning moratorium would not preclude you from following those other two tracks at a later date. It would simply slow down the process and the time in which you need to take those other actions.
Wouldn't move forward and come up with, you know, a specific area where the retail, retail sale would occur?
That's right.
Okay.
Could we move forward with defining zoning consistent with what we've already done for medical and enact a moratorium to a date certain, so that then if we needed to change the zoning we've put in place prior to a license being issued, we would have time after the March 1st date. So we would put zoning in place, but no one could get a license until after, say, December 31st. I don't know if that's exactly the right date for us.
So could we do both? Once the zoning moratorium is in place, nobody can apply for a license.
Right, but could we enact the zoning that would go into effect as soon as the moratorium ends?
Well, I think we'd want to be informed by the commission and the action they take, and I think that's one of the purposes of a moratorium.
Yeah, but here, but here, I think what Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, what Dawn's saying though is let's pretend that the moratorium doesn't pass. Then you don't have anything in place. So I think what she's suggesting is we put in place the, you know, the best zoning that we can think of.
The best thing we can come up with right now.
Come up with, based on what we know now, so in case it doesn't pass, at least we have that in place. Is that a better way of saying it? I think so.
It's another way of getting at it, too, but I'm thinking that maybe we don't need to then change the zoning. It just goes into place once the moratorium's up, depending on how the legislation's written. But we won't know till March, which will be too late even to get something in April as far as changes. But there's a very, I think that there will be worries about even a temporary moratorium.
I mean, certainly those can go on the same town meeting warrant. If you have a moratorium in place and zoning enacted, I mean, there's a little bit of confusion. You would have to specify in your moratorium that, you know, it would supersede any other zoning that had been adopted governing these uses until such time as that moratorium expired.
Yes.
But that would be one way of proceeding. And then, you know, once regulations are enacted and if there are things you want to change about, you know, that can come at your subsequent town meeting with respect to maybe, you know, further refining your permitting process or your licensing, if there's some licensing authority given to towns, there's not specifically under the legislation right now. But again, these regulations are going to be a very comprehensive implementation of this, creating an entirely new agency and an entirely, and very complicated regulatory scheme for what is a new industry in Massachusetts.
So if we do the kind of bifurcated, we do the moratorium and bylaw amendment, creating a zone for them, and we want to make some changes based on the commission, we go back to town meeting and offer other articles, bylaw amendments, so they don't pass, then we're stuck with what we'd adopted.
Right, and I think if you are going to be adopting zoning before your, the regulations are enacted, I think you do want to look at your permitting scheme for these, whether you're going to, it's going to be a simple by right, you know, no permit use, or whether you're going to want to impose a special permit requirement or some sort of site plan review. Some of that will need to be addressed in addition to just establishing the zone in which they're allowed.
I think the current proposal from planning was that it would be limited to commercial neighborhood, wouldn't be within 500 feet of a school, and Leslie's here, and that it would be by special permit.
I guess one thing I was interested in.
Am I missing anything?
Looking at all the other communities, Franklin has a medical marijuana use overlay district. Can you tell, tell us about that and how that works?
So the way an overlay district works is that it, you take a look across the community at the areas in which you would be willing to have a particular use, such as marijuana establishments, be located. It doesn't alter the underlying zoning, so if, and you can choose to break up the underlying zoning districts with respect to where you overlay your medical or your recreational marijuana uses. So if you want to carve out one portion of your commercial district and one portion of your, you know, industrial district, but not impose marijuana on the entirety of the district, you can specify, amend your zoning map to create what's known as an overlay, and then the use is only allowed within, on those specific parcels that are identified within the overlay district. Generally, it's done by specific parcel. But it will have to, medical and recreational, there will have to be, those will have to include both uses in any zone that you may create with respect to an overlay. You won't be able to create an overlay for only recreational that differs from what you have done for medical.
And it can't be so restrictive that you can't have it, like you still don't have the possibility?
Yeah, it can't be impracticable, right?
And what appealed to me was, is that, I hear from people in the community, we just want to know where it is. And when we talk about the map, there were so many different options about where it could be. That's why the overlay district was appealing to me, because it could be, to investigate, because it could be more narrowly focused and not rely on things like special permits and those kinds of things necessarily.
I will say that special permits do give you some ability to condition uses, which, given some of the potential impacts, where, I mean, we're dealing with a cash-only industry. There are specific security concerns that are attendant to that. Some of that will certainly be addressed in the regulations, but if you want to have some authority to condition a use, it will have to be allowed by something other than a straight by right. It would have to either have a site plan component or a special permit requirement.
I think it should definitely have special permit review. Our deputy of planning is here.
Hi, Leslie Snell from the planning board. So what we have talked about very preliminarily is an article that would probably allow recreational marijuana by special permit in the same districts where medical marijuana is currently allowed. That's the commercial neighborhood, which is very limited, as well as the commercial industrial district, which is also very limited. The special permit, as town council said, would allow for additional oversight and for conditions, which I think would be appropriate. And we have been looking at what other communities are doing relative to these uses, and we're in the process of doing research. We've really just been waiting on some direction from the board about what you would like to do, and I think the chairman had a great idea about adopting the regulations and a moratorium. That way, at least we have something in place. Otherwise, recreational marijuana will be treated similar to just retail use, which is allowed in a lot of locations around the island that may not be suitable for this type of use.
Don, why, I'm sorry, Leslie, while you're there, what, and how do we, how is, how do we explain for the audience how we limit, or how we place adult, you know, adult uses?
Well, adult uses are treated a little bit differently under our bylaw. They are allowed in different districts. They are allowed in RC2, which is a district that's being phased out, so we don't want to add any new uses to that district. And they're also allowed in the commercial industrial district. I think there's a map in your packet. This is it. And the RC2 district is actually a bit more spread out than the commercial neighborhood, which is what we would recommend for the marijuana uses. Adult uses have to be separated a certain distance from schools, from religious institutions, from places where children tend to congregate, that type of thing. So we did develop some standards that are in the bylaw, and similar-type standards could be considered for this as well.
Yeah, I think, I think we should be following that in the commercial industrial, not in the RC2, and not in the commercial neighborhood. I think we should be sort of doing something in between the two, but.
Well, except the medical is allowed in the CN.
Right.
And we have to allow the recreational where the medical is. Is that what you're, what you're saying?
Certainly, you could amend where you allow recreational, but they will have to line up.
Or medical.
Yeah, I mean, you can amend where you currently allow medical, but they will have to match.
And that could be problematic, because there's already two companies who've done an extensive amount of work to try to do the medical.
And Madam Chairman, both of those are in the commercial neighborhood zoning district.
What's the advantage you're going to do in a zoning moratorium?
I think the issue is, I mean, we were hoping that we'd have a clearer idea by August of what the overall regulations were going to be. Now we're hearing that it's going to be March. So that doesn't even get, give us time from the, by, to put something on for the April town meeting.
And there's additional recommendations, May 1st or so for Nantucket specifically?
Correct. And the licenses could go, and so, any zoning has to be adopted by April 1st, and the first licenses could be issued by June 1st. That's what you said, right?
That's correct. So any applicant as of April 1st will go by what is approved in those towns. If a moratorium is in place, then that will control, and as of right now, the Attorney General has approved out as far as December 31st of 2018. That's sort of the date as of right now, that, the sort of the maximum duration of moratorium that's been approved by the Attorney General.
But it's, but probably something like that would be realistic if, you know, say we institute the zoning and it works, if we do it as a special, but we still put the moratorium in, we don't need to make any changes, that's fine. It expires in December and someone can move forward. But if we do need to make changes, that will probably require another special town meeting to get something enacted prior to the December 31st deadline, because we have to have a vote of town meeting and it has to get approved by the Attorney General. So it's not just the town meeting date, it needs to be a couple of months later.
But here's a question. What if we've decided we want to limit the number of recreational to the same number as?
As medical.
As medical, and we want it to be one? Can we, can we make that vote?
So that's where we get back into this procedure. Limitations and bans are pursuant to a ballot vote and then a subsequently acted bylaw. It's a two-part process. And because Nantucket is a voted yes on Article Four, they have to follow that ballot bylaw procedure in order to impose a limitation.
So if we wanted to put a limit of one, one medical, you know, one medical, one recreational, we have to vote that. And so we could vote that, it'd be in wherever it ends up, and we'd have that one, and then we deal, we could see how it goes.
Unless something changes in March where they say you can't do that.
I think it would be unlikely for that part of, because that's going to be, that's currently what the law is right now, that you can have a limiting ballot bylaw vote to restrict the same number of medical and recreational facilities.
So taking, doing that gives me a lot more comfort than just looking at this map and saying, they could go anywhere. So I think that's an excellent idea, Matt.
So that could be part of it. It could be those districts by special permit, and it could be limited to one, and we are going to have a special election, so we could put it on the ballot.
And get it, I'm just thinking, get it all, get as much of it done as we can get done, instead of, yeah.
So we could either do that instead of a moratorium, or we could also institute a moratorium so that until it expires, nothing can go in in case there's more changes. So that's what the board.
Yeah, I think if we're taking that to the board, taking that to town meeting, I, I'm confused about saying we want to do both, because they're two very different strategies.
Also, one may or may not pass.
Well, I mean, if we're interested in, I mean, I guess it depends, I'd be in favor of just moving forward with that, with the recommendation from planning and limiting it to one, and I'm less interested, I mean, less, you know, pushing for a concept of a moratorium then, especially given the vote in November.
Yeah, I'm not sold on the moratorium. That's why I'm trying to figure out what's the advantage of it.
Well, I think there's still, I mean, there is a lot of information that we don't have that could change, so I think, on one hand, the moratorium allows us to have all the information to make the decision, but I think we're also fairly close with what we want to start with and be comfortable with initially, and again, based on the vote of Nantucket, you know, is it necessary, or should we have moratorium? But I do see the advantage, but I also like Matt's proposal and Jim's proposal, the combination.
And that would all happen on a special town meeting?
Yeah, I'd say do it all in November. Do one, limit it to one and put the vote to one, and then, you know, and if you want to do a moratorium, great, but to see what all the other information is, but.
And do it CN and CI, whatever you, whatever you recommend.
Is it that if we have a moratorium on the warrant and it got passed, that, does that necessitate another special town meeting, just based on that, because you're saying that we'd have to vote again? No.
No, it would necessitate another town meeting if you wanted to make any changes to the zoning.
Okay, if that zoning passed.
Now, one thing that we do need to consider is it could pass, the chain, the zoning bylaw change and the limitation could pass at town meeting, and it could fail at the ballot, and then we have nothing. So the limitation might want to be separate than the zoning.
If I may, your limitation has to be voted both as a ballot and as a bylaw.
Right, that's right.
And if you, the ballot vote is just a majority, the bylaw vote is a two-thirds, so you're probably more likely to have a ballot pass than a bylaw, perhaps.
We watch that with the sewer. But I'm just wondering if we would split the zoning article and enact the locations that could go in and buy a special permit, and then do a separate zoning where that would put the limitation to the one, just in case it didn't pass at the ballot. So at least we would have something in place.
If I may, one other option is you certainly can pass over articles if, you know, if you want, if your concern is, will the moratorium pass? You can vote that first, and if it passes, you can pass over the other articles and, you know, pick them up at your annual town meeting or later date, or if it fails, you can, you know, move, move those articles. So that is, you know, to have them on the warrant as a backup is certainly an option, doesn't require you to vote all of them necessarily.
So, I mean, I'm comfortable with the moratorium. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with the moratorium and the two separate ballot measures. I mean, I don't, I'd prefer to have it together, but it gives people a chance to say yes or no to how many they want. So it's always good to let people vote on things like that.
And once you go down that road, you're going to potentially have, there's some level of complication with doing your ballot and your bylaw to limit, along with your zoning to allow, because your zoning to allow is going to be dependent on whether or not your limitation passes with respect to where you define your district, perhaps. So if you're going to be looking at more locations than just one, you may have a broader district. So that's just another consideration with respect to all of the moving parts of how this happens at a single town meeting.
So would that leave you to narrow the area?
Well, if you're going to limit your recreational and medical uses to one of each, you may choose to impose a smaller overlay than if you have, if you're going to have no limitation, and you're going to have multiple. Or you perhaps may want to have a very limited district, which will necessarily restrict the number of locations that someone could apply for.
Like an overlay district?
Leslie, go ahead. Hi, we would not recommend an overlay district. And the Planning Board has actually been in the process of reducing and removing overlay districts. And the CN district, on its own, is extremely restrictive. It's, off the top of my head, I think it's along Old South Road corridor. There's some CN out by the airport on Hannaby Lane in that area. Those are the main areas where CN is located. And then you have the industrial area out on Bunker Road.
And where it is right by the school would be limited by it not being able to be that close to the school.
Yeah, and we have met with some potential business owners about locating on Surfside Road, and almost all of those locations are too close in proximity to the school, or parks or other places that would restrict them.
So where are we?
It's interesting. I think that some of the general public, I walk my dogs a certain route down by the Jetties, and some of the general public thinks it's legal already. I was behind a group the other day, and one of the girls is saying, "Oh, I thought we were smoking it. I thought we were going to eat it." "Oh, you can smoke. It's legal here now. It's not a big deal." And they're walking down the street, you know, and this has happened to a couple of different groups, you know, walking down Jetties Road. And it's pretty interesting. I don't think, the vote is one thing, but the reality, I don't think anyone really knows. They think it's legal now. We voted it, so we can do what we want. So it's just, it's very interesting.
Do we have to make a decision tonight on this?
No, you're scheduled to adopt the warrant later in August, and I just jotted down a note to have some additional discussion about warrant articles, because we'll have the citizen warrant articles in by your next meeting, August 9th. So this was more to get an update and discuss some specifics.
So maybe everyone could digest this information a little bit more before we make a final decision about the warrant. Okay, let's move on to the other potential articles. Thank you so much.
The next one would be the fire station supplemental appropriation. I think we've talked about that already.
I think everyone's good with that.
We have a land bank school property transfer authorization, as well as, so I think everybody knows about that. This would potentially transfer some town-owned property to the land bank in exchange for some land bank property to be used for school playing fields off Pilot Well Lane. Possible action, this is a little up in the air right at the moment, in connection with land acquisition for roadway widening at Washington Street-França Street intersection, and that I think is still under some amount of discussion with the land banks. PLUS has requested five zoning articles in connection with the so-called Article 75 from the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. I think we've got a couple of maps. And, do you want to mention them? And, sorry, and also, just to say to the board, I tried to kind of categorize these as time-sensitive and not so time-sensitive, but maybe we might as well do them anyway. And that's just based on some discussions that I've had with people. Certainly, that classification is up to the board.
So the five articles from PLUS, those are a breakout of Article 75 from the Annual Town Meeting. You may recall, the Planning Board had to have sort of a last-minute public hearing to make some changes, and that caused some confusion, and people thought the article was too long. So now we have taken that article and the content that was in it and turned it into five articles. So there's no new information in there. I think it's easier to understand, and like items are grouped together. So we would like a commitment from you that those will be included on the warrant. A lot of those are very technical in nature, and there are some projects that sort of can't move forward right now, because they're waiting on the outcome of those articles.
Did you withdraw that article, or was it, did it fail?
I believe it failed, which was unfortunate.
I remember there being quite a bit of confusion. It was very late in the meeting.
It was late, and some of the changes that really hadn't happened between the motion that was printed in the warrant and the motion that was presented were highlighted as new information when it really wasn't new information. So the process around the article was just confusing, but the content of it is important, and we would like to move forward with that.
Is everyone okay with putting those on?
What kind of projects are being held up, or what's making it time-sensitive?
There's a sort of conceptual project that I don't particularly want to get into the details of right now, that could involve a mixed retail apartment building, workforce rental housing project. And there's some flexibility in our regulations that doesn't exist right now that we're proposing in one of the articles, and they're sort of waiting to see how that works out. And then there are some other people that have open building permits that have run into some permitting interpretation issues. That would be cleared up through some of the definition changes and other things in these articles, where some of the bylaw's a little bit vague right now.
I think it's smart to break them up, so you'll have five discussions.
It's here to digest.
Yeah, one big rambling discussion. I think it's smart.
And are these the same articles that came before the Annual Town Meeting?
Yes.
There's no changes? Okay, good. Thanks.
Don, sit down here. The next is a zoning article for South Shore Road, which I think was also brought forward at 2017 Annual Town Meeting but failed.
This was brought forward by a citizen.
Right.
And we prepared this article for a citizen to submit again. So right now, I'm not sure that this really needs the selectmen's involvement. I believe it's going to be submitted as a citizen petition, if it moves forward at all.
Okay. If it weren't submitted as a citizen petition, is there any planning request for it, do you think?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that's going to be a citizen one, it sounds like. Okay. And then district improvement financing. This is a discussion item scheduled for your August 9th meeting with a number of items that are still pending from planning. So I don't know if you want to have any discussion about that.
Well, I think, sure, but I think we are going to discuss that in more depth at August 9th, but if you want to say something.
The Planning Board did vote before the last Annual Town Meeting to support this article. They feel that it's really important in relation to some of the projects pending on Old South Road, particularly the Richmond Project. And this one is time-sensitive. I would really encourage you to consider including this on the warrant. The assessed value of these properties is pretty low right now, and there are a lot of construction projects happening. If we don't adopt this at the special town meeting, a lot of the valuations will change as of January 1st, and we won't be able to capture as much of the revenue that we would be able to capture if this is adopted at a special.
How much?
My recollection is, we either withdrew or supported, withdrew this article from the board's perspective, because there were so many unanswered questions, and then there was really a financing. We also asked for, we didn't have a list of what the projects were and kind of up-to-date capital requirements, capital budgets, so I'm not sure. I don't know if anything, I don't know if any of that's changed since we met two weeks ago, when this was not on the list. So we'd be happy to discuss it again, but I guess I'm not sure if we really fleshed it out since the April town meeting. Maybe we have, maybe there's something that...
I think we're going to have all that information by August 2nd for the August 9th meeting.
So we're going to have updated budgets based on, you know, construction estimates and...
That's my understanding, that everything that was on the list will be ready for the August 9th meeting.
Andrew and I have been working with finance to get numbers on new construction, on current assessed values, sort of projected assessed values for January. We've roughed out the development program that would be necessary that hasn't been finalized or presented or discussed with Libby yet, but we have been working on a draft of that.
Great.
And we have the...
And this is, it's a financing alternative, so it's, we last time talked about how important it is for the Finance Department and the Planning Department to work together and make a kind of proposal, because whether it's in our best interest as a town to use this kind of financing is really different from a, you know, from, it's not just a planning consideration.
A couple of points. It doesn't, when we talk about capturing value, we're going to capture that value when these buildings are built regardless. It's just, what is that money going to be used for? And so the discussion that we're really having is taking the tax dollars that are going to be created on these lots, usually a diff is used in a blighted area to encourage development. That's not the case here. This is going to happen anyway. If you look, there's eight points. The first one is the development plan. You know, go online and look at what a development plan is. Look, I pulled one up today from Brockton. Look at Brockton's, look at Boston's, look at, that's step one. And we, once we have that, we can look at that. Brockton's was like 80 pages. You know, we can read it, and we can digest it, and understand if it makes sense or not. That's step one. We're trying to go to the last step. We're going to step eight, and skipping one to seven. So I think that it's very, you know, it's very important for us to understand, for the town to vote on it, we have to have it in the order that the state requests it. So if we have the information, then we can make a decision. If we haven't, I would advise us to pass over it or recommend against it.
And when do we adopt the warrant?
What was the date of, it's after August 9th.
When do we do it?
August 23rd. August 23rd.
Okay.
So we'll discuss it on the 9th with all of the information that's available to us.
I guess, you know, knowing what I know now, I don't see that we have enough information to even bring it back on the 9th, so.
We'll know that on the 2nd, when we get the information.
Here we go.
I hope.
Some non-time-sensitive articles that hopefully maybe possibly seem non-controversial, and it would be helpful if we had them on, but not critical. In Eastman for National Grid in connection with the C Street Pump Station Upgrade Project, that could be done at the annual. It might be just as well to get it out of the way at the special. The expense, acceptance of a general law regarding special safety zones, this is in connection with the speed limit general law that was accepted at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. I think we talked about that a little bit. Membership amendment for the Planning Commission home legislation, which has to do with DPW representation on the commission. There's a couple of miscellaneous takings that PLUS has put forward, if you want to look at maps of what those items specifically are.
We've proposed one miscellaneous acquisition article, which contains some parcels. This particular one, this is at the corner of two paper streets. In a prior town meeting article, that particular corner was left out, and everything around it was conveyed to the abutting property owners. We have a property owner ready, willing, and able to purchase that remaining piece of the paper street, but there is a problem with the prior article as voted, so this would be a cleanup of that article. The next one, these are miscellaneous parcels in Maticet. These were believed to be owned by the town when a prior article was voted. Upon some further deed research, the only deed to the town was a treasurer's deed, and that's not good enough. So an eminent domain taking would need to happen, just to clear the title and to be able to dispose of those as already voted by town meeting. And the next one is the same type of situation at the end of Arlington Street. So all of these parcels have been subject to prior town meeting votes, but they do need this additional action for us to be able to move forward.
Lastly, there was a request to increase the terms of the members of the Affordable Housing Trust from two years to three years.
We're withdrawing that?
Withdrawing?
Because apparently according to town...
Come up.
Andrew mentioned something before he went away on vacation, that we can't go. Did you hear that part before he went away? That we can't change it? It would be a home rule petition, but we adopted the state Affordable Housing Trust Fund and then adjusted it for Nantucket, and apparently it's two years at the state level. It was very confusing before he left, but that's what the gist of it was, that we can't, we can't change it. So I don't think it should be going on to the town meeting.
Okay, there's one new item that came in after this came out, and it has to do with a project that National Grid is going to be starting this year. It's called the Feeder Project, and it involves the upgrade of some of their infrastructure. And as a result of that, and there's still a lot of discussion going on internally about the project and its root and all of that, and there have been some discussions about areas where their project is going to happen, where town infrastructure should perhaps be replaced at the same time that streets are open. And we wouldn't be able to do absolutely everything, because now we're into the millions and millions of dollars. But there are at least a couple of streets that I think we'd want to probably look at replacing sewer, water, and/or stormwater improvements. And I'm waiting on some, a couple of town departments to give me some pricing on that. And Sewer, for example, could probably appropriate some funds out of its retained earnings. It wouldn't necessarily be additional overrides or anything like that, but we have not concluded our review of that, so just FYI. For opening streets, anyway, bottom line is, we might as well do some of our work, even though it's, this is a project that recently was brought to our attention by National Grid.
Okay. Does everyone seem relatively okay with the non-controversial stuff? Okay, so I guess we'll just revisit. Oh, Leslie?
Madam Chairman, I thought there was a home rule petition for the NPDC on your list?
It's, yes, about the membership. It's on here.
Okay.
About the DPW change.
Okay, that has the board of selectmen's support for the warrant.
It sounds like you were talking at that time.
And I will clarify, Andrew Forrest did talk to Vicky Marsh about that Affordable Housing Trust Fund article, and that will have to wait.
Okay.
So I don't know if there are any other board questions, requests for information, anything like that. Otherwise, we will update all of this and review it with you again on August 9th.
Okay.
Along with whatever we've gotten from citizens.
Okay.
Citizen warrant articles can be submitted until Friday, the 28th, at 4:00.
Opens tomorrow, right?
Opens tomorrow. And just as a reminder, the signatures of 100 registered voters are required.
Okay.
The next town manager report item is the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Timeline. That's in your packet. It's been sent around to all the usual departments and officials that are involved with town meeting. I don't think it's too much different than last year's. And if board is willing to endorse it, then we'll get it posted and start working on that.
I only have one comment. March 1st is in the middle of School Vacation Week. Can we move that to the following week? Or is that too tight for our review? I think last year, we actually didn't have a meeting that week.
Yep. I think you're right.
Last year, we only had one night to review before they had, and we decided, that's why we asked Libby to bring it, to push it up, so. That's why we asked Libby to bring it, to push it up, so.
Well, we can try to move it up a week to Wednesday, February 21st, and then we can see where we are then, and then continue the discussion with potential adoption of any comments or recommendations the board has on March 7th. Because otherwise, I mean, this is just a tight...
Well, if we're having a meeting March 1st, you can have a meeting. I won't be here.
I don't think I'll be here either, so.
But it's, it's fine. I can submit my comments ahead of time. But we'll just have to have a meeting during school break this year.
I'll be here.
We'll put maybe a TBD kind of a thing on that.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's it for Town Managers.
So Selectmen Reports and Comments. Melissa Philbrook is here with a little presentation about some population study work that Remains started, and Ellen Warden is here.
Yes, hi. Melissa Philbrook, speaking for Romania and Tucket. I'm here with Ellen Warden. I think you have a request pending, and I just wanted to update the board in a preliminary fashion about some work that we've been doing. Really, last year, we started trying to think about community needs and talk about who we are as a community and realized it was really hard to get that answer. Several different groups that I've been working with were trying to find out some basic information about what exists on the island right now, and that became, you know, just a deep dive, trying to figure out and get information. And you'd see conflicting reports and different things about how many people ride the ferry, how many people live here, is the census accurate, is it not? All of the things that we all anecdotally know are somewhat problematic. And then we started working with Ellen Warden and some of his thinking partners about a way to try to solve that problem. This is very separate from, I think, what the FinCom was looking for some support on, but in the meantime, we should, wanted to let you know what we've been working on and where it stands right now. So I'm going to let Ellen explain the concept of a data platform for Nantucket.
Thanks. What we determined as we thought about figuring out the population study was, the value, yes, was in the study, but maybe there was bigger value in the data. And so from that realization, we created the Nantucket Data Platform. And Erica, if you want to blow through this, we'll go quickly. So the mission is to create a reservoir of reliable data that's continuously updated and readily available to the community for the purpose of improving knowledge and inspiring astute decision-making among government, philanthropies, and businesses. And the vision really is that it would become so reliable and so current and so important that any major decision, the gating issue would be, what does the platform say? What data does it have? Do you want to go next? You can skip that one. And so the idea is really to combine hyper-local data with national databases, so we have something really reliable. The people we'll get into in a second, but there are people on the island that are demographers, data analysts, and we've leveraged some people at the national level that are data scientists and social scientists. And then the systems include local data, this national database, and the people that will ultimately create descriptive data that will empower users to determine insights and then take action. So the next slide just shows you, it's very simple. We're going to mine data, we're going to scrub it and analyze it, and we're going to share it with the community. The community will be broadly thought of, we'll have a website, and we'll publish data. We'll also have customers, Remains a customer, to help figure out their effective population, which Melissa will come back to at the end. The people, one of the most interesting people that got involved is Joe Semelowski, who's the Chairman of the Advisory Board. Joe was Citigroup's Chief Data Officer. He spends the majority of the year here. He's also the external advisor to McKinsey for data analytics, and this idea was right over the plate for him. Melissa and Remains represent the first customer. You probably know Peter Morrison, who's got 35 years as a demographer. And then Kristi Ferentzela was an economist with the Department of Commerce, who's living here now and is mining data for us. And Samantha Reese is a process engineer who's also mining data for us. So again, the structure is, take hyper-local data and unify it with Civis, which is the national data provider, database provider. There are other third parties that we're talking to about integrating our data with their data. This is basically a break-even entity. We're looking at whether we could be a 501(c)(3) or public benefit corporation. It'll be funded by trustees, who are people who are making $5,000 commitments over, every year for three years to help launch. We have customers, Remains paying for their study. We may at some point come to the town, so we're sort of in startup mode. And then communication, once we get things to share with the community, we'll do that, and we're sort of planning on some fall updates for the community. And so the timeline was, the idea got launched in the spring. We're mining data in the summer and evidencing our deal with Civis. In the fall, we'll be public and, or we'll have a public presentation. And then the future vision is, with every month, the data gets more valuable. We'll have updates from the steamship, updates from the public schools, updates from the hospital. And so every year, the, every month, the data gets more and more valuable and more and more reliable. One, one thing I'd point out is there are really three levels of data analysis. The first is descriptive data, which is what's happening, and that's really our focus. The next is predictive data. What do you think's going to happen? We're happy to work with other parties that might want to do that. That's really not what we do. We're trying to build the base, the foundation of reliable data. And then there's prescriptive data, based on what's happening, what you think is going to happen, what should happen. We're also not involved in that. So think of this as really a database of reliable data that's continuously updated. And then we're back to the effective population study. I'll let the client describe.
Which I can describe just very briefly. We have been interested in who we are as a community. One of the places we looked to for, was a study that we found, that Jackson Hole did, to look at a seasonal community and recognize that there isn't, knowing who our year-round residents is very important, but understanding the seasonal fluctuations is also very critical as you determine service loads and as you think about what the burden on the community is and who really is here. What is our effective population? So that's the, the project that we've tasked the platform with, trying to help us understand in terms of what's happening now. Those are really all chapters when you look at how you divide us between visitors, permanent residents, commuting workforce, seasonal residents, and seasonal workforce. Some of those, we have very good data sets on. Some of them, there's big gaps in what we know. We think we might work with some of the WPI students to try to get some more information about our commuting workforce, for example, this fall, and design a project around something that they can work on because we've identified a real gap in understanding or hard evidence, or at least extracted evidence about who those people are. So those are, each represent chapters. They'll roll out probably in that, in some order. And hopefully by, certainly this time next year, we hope to have made our way all the way around that wheel and have that out there. And just to emphasize what Ellen said, we're really just looking to understand who we are now. We're not trying through this study to predict where we will be in the future. But it's, it, most of the projects I've been working on, it's sort of, you start so far behind when you don't, can't, when you can't provide accurate data about who we are and where we are now. So if we can get that far, I think we will have gone a very, very long way. So that's the plan.
Thank you very much. So this was a piece in responding, in trying to respond to the FinCom's request from January. And I actually thought someone would be here from FinCom. But, I mean, I think that this is a really good first piece in terms of defining our population and having really accurate data. Because it's, it's very hard to do any studies if you don't have a good database.
I'm not going to take time tonight, but I'd be interested in how they, how you're going to mine the data. I've learned some about geo-fencing and some other stuff recently. It's incredible, that the information you can get. You know, everyone signs their rights away when they, you know, when they have their cell phone and they go on their apps and everything else. It's incredible. So, you know, I think you're going to, I think the information they're going to find, if they're doing what I think they're doing, will be very complete.
And then, you know, once it's going...
Yeah, if I could respond quickly to that.
Yes.
One of the benefits of Joe and the team we're assembling is their, you know, Melissa and I, it's a little bit of alphabet soup. We're eager rookies, data rookies. So we're learning a lot. And Joe says, we're all learning a lot because what exists this month didn't exist a month ago. With regard to town data, our data miners have started to make it to the various departments, and they've generally been helpful. Some department heads have sort of said, I don't know what this is. So if we had an ask, it would be great if you felt comfortable enough to reach out to the department heads and say, hey, you may see Kristi and Samantha. They're trying to mine public data. If you can facilitate that, that would be great. Because I understand the lack of knowledge about what we're doing. That would be an enormous help.
Maybe if you could give me something I could have, or I will communicate with them because they're probably hearing something they don't know anything about.
Yep.
And they don't know if it's a town administration okay thing or...
And part of this timing is, you know, we're, we're going to be developing, or the platform's developing, data sharing agreements, things that help protect proprietary information. From the town, we're looking for already public data, you know, not anything that wouldn't be available to the public, you know, through a normal request. So that's probably very easy. As we look at some of the other private sources, be they a transportation company, we're trying to be careful about how to protect their data but still get it and use it in the, in analysis that happens. So we will definitely circulate something that you can circulate to the town. And as Ellen said, Remains is the first customer, but hopefully there are other customers out there that help, can help support this effort. And we have talked to most of the major entities here, be it the hospitals and schools, and I think obviously the town is one of those future customers should this really get up and running. And hopefully by the fall, we'll be able to report back with more progress.
Head Manager, is that a question, comment?
Absolutely.
So the data you're going to be collecting is more than population. That Nantucket data will be doing, and then you're coming in doing the population part of it. That Finance Committee may or may not be very similar. So would the town ever be a customer of more data outside of population?
Yeah, one of, one of the things Joe is working on is developing use cases. So we've gone to the various folks that Melissa's mentioned, the hospital, the schools, and have said, what are you trying to solve? What's the problem that you're facing or the opportunity you want to take advantage of? And if someone can describe that to us, and we're developing a library of use cases, then we can think about how data can support that. So on one hand, we're looking for use cases. So for anyone who's listening, if you have an idea you want to understand, you can send us an email, and we'll add it to the library, and we'll try to figure out if data exists. Separately, sort of Matt referred to, there's just a lot of data. So we're gathering data, not necessarily knowing how we'll use it, publicly available data. And so those are the two barbells, and hopefully they come together with interesting use cases. And Joe's developing some really fascinating ideas, everything from the US Census in 2020, where it'd be great to get the Nantucket Census count more accurate and up, which affects town funding, all the way to figuring out the condition of dirt roads with censors. So from dirt roads to the US Census and sort of everything in between.
Thank you.
Yeah, it just seems like a very exciting project, and maybe we can get an update in the fall and figure out, I think it'll be an ongoing thing, I figure out how to use this.
The second part of...
And if it addresses what, at least a portion of what FinCom is looking for.
The second part of FinCom's question is the, is sort of the buildup question, which we put to bed, you know, 15 years ago. And I think if the Planning Department has kept track, they should be able to update that and give that to the, to the FinCom. I mean, and that was a contentious issue for, you know, 20 years, and a bunch of people sat in a room and counted lot by lot, and, you know, and Planning Department has been tracking it since then. So we should have that number available. And I think that between those two things, I think we should answer their question. If we have to send a request for that.
And be able to, to use that data to make projections once there's more accurate current data, then maybe it is something that, that they want to take a step further in some way. But I think that getting this project up and running is sort of the best thing I've heard about in a while, to get data.
So you're suggesting that they recalculate the build-out, or is that, you're saying that data already exists?
Well, Leslie can answer. I think they have, they have it on the second.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that I think the, the letter from the FinCom back in January leaves a little bit of a false impression about what we've been doing with zoning. It seems to imply that all of the zoning bylaw changes and map changes that have been made are only increasing density, when in fact, the Planning Board has worked very hard to bring forward a balanced slate of articles, year after year after year. And sometimes it does add, and sometimes it takes away, and sometimes it takes away a lot. And we have been tracking, at least within the sewer district, how many dwelling unit additions and subtractions have taken place. And since 2006, through land bank acquisitions, zoning bylaw changes, and map changes, just under 800 dwelling units have been removed, as far as potential dwelling units. So that kind of information we do have. We don't have a lot-by-lot build-out. That's a tremendous project. There was some build-out analysis done in the 2009 Master Plan that's set to be updated in 2019, so that's something that, you know, we will be working on, some type of projection. You know, I really encourage the Remain project. I think this sounds like, you know, a great idea to come up with what they call the effective population because population's not always tied to build-out. Those are two separate things.
But my sense, Leslie, would help you guys if, you know, if you gave those, if regularly updated those numbers, on the build-out numbers. If you regularly updated people, then I think there'd be more trust in that the numbers are being tracked. I think that part of what happens, we get to Town Meeting and, you know, and they don't see the effect of, you know, this change does X, Y, and Z. You know, if people saw it every single time, then there would not be some of the miscommunication about it or misconception. And I think, so sort of getting the updated, even if it's not lot by lot, but getting the updated numbers, I think would be positive for the community. I think it would help, you know, sort of put people at ease.
I mean, I agree. I mean, I know that Martha's Vineyard does that on a, on a routine basis. They have a, they actually have a exhibit in their annual report, I think, put up. I'm not sure what the Planning Commission is, but, because I know, we've heard Andrew say that there's by right potential X number of lots or X number of dwelling units that could be built today. And I don't know what those are. I think it would be helpful to know what that is when we come to zoning articles at Town Meeting.
And, Madam Chairman, we do track a lot of that information annually. We provide to you all an update of the sewer additions and subtractions. So that's something that we do. Maybe making it more public would be helpful. I mean, it is discussed at the Planning Board Public Hearings, which we are required to hold prior to any recommendations. So maybe just getting that out there in a different manner would be helpful.
Just knowing how many, how many building, how many unbuilt air units could be built today, given...
Even a slide here, once a year, would be helpful.
Well, I don't know that we can provide that exact information, but something.
Well, just some information, directionally correct.
To make it exact because things tie into ground cover, number of bedrooms you can have.
No, I understand, yeah.
There are a lot of different pieces that affect whether, say, a lot can have three units or one. It is a little bit complex, I understand, but there might be...
You'd get to have something.
Some, some data that can be provided. Thank you. Okay, so there's no one here from FinCom, so I guess they'll get back to us on...
Thank you.
Whether they're happy with this for now. Okay, well, I'm sure we'll be talking to them. Six Fairgrounds Road. So we have a recommendation from the Review Committee on the RFP. And Tucker's here, and we need to get Ed on the phone.
Ed, yes, Ed can, I'll aim.
I have the phone in front of me here for when he calls in.
Okay. Tucker Holland, housing specialist for the town, and pleased to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to relay the recommendation from the Review Committee regarding the development of workforce housing at the Six Fairgrounds Road location.
I'm briefly going to just go through a little background on this, and some of the process, and get to the recommendation from the review committee. I'm sure, as you're all familiar, the land, the, excuse me, the town purchased the land that we are standing on now and talking about with regard to this potential development back in 2004 by a vote at town meeting. And one of the express purposes was for the development of workforce and affordable housing. Obviously, it took a little time to get to the point of moving forward on that, but in 2016, the board had convened a work group to put together an RFP. We worked very closely with some experts in the field, including Ed Marchand, who may be dialing in momentarily here. And coming out of that process earlier this year, the prior board had voted to issue the RFP for Six Fairgrounds Road, calling for the development of 64 units, with certain requirements on affordability and so forth. And the town received three bona fide proposals in response to the RFP at the end of May. There was a fourth proposal that was submitted late, and therefore was required to be rejected. But the three proposal, proposals were then reviewed by a group of seven folks on our review committee, including our chair and vice chair of this board, as well as our town manager, director of planning, a seasonal resident with extensive expertise in affordable housing and real estate, as well as a local architectural designer, and the chairman of our FinCom. So that group met really over a series of three public meetings to plan for and do their deliberations. We also had the opportunity to hear in public presentations from each of the parties who submitted a proposal. And the three parties were Hall Keane Management, GP Properties LLC, and the Women's Institute for Housing and Economic Development. So you can see in the memo that was provided, each of these proposals was graded along the seven principal criteria: experience and capacity, affordability, number of units, site design, building design, financial feasibility, and references and site visit.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Tucker was just in the middle of doing a synopsis of, of the review.
Great.
Thanks for joining us, Ed. So the, each of the, as I mentioned, proposals was evaluated across each of those criteria. Composite scores were provided by the review committee in each of the categories for each of the proposals, and then an overall composite score for each proposer was arrived at. The overall composite score for Hall Keane Management was highly advantageous. The possibilities were highly advantageous, advantageous and not advantageous. So they received the highest score possible. The runner-up, if you will, received an overall score of advantage plus to highly advantageous. And then the third proposal received an overall advantageous composite score. So it really, it really was the case that one of the three proposals stood out significantly above the other two. And a couple of the reasons for that were the substantial experience of the developer with regard to projects of similar scale, and knowledge of the island already, and working on the Cape and islands collectively, as well as their experience with securing subsidies, which are called for in the financial plan. Their references were excellent. I had the opportunity to visit off-island sites for all three proposers, the opportunity to interview residents in each of those facilities. And I'll say, in the, in, in every case, the residents were highly satisfied with the product. And particularly with the Hall Keane developments that I visited. Again, the references from the planning director in the city of New Bedford, as well as the housing specialist in Chicopee, very high marks. With regard to the other two, again, you know, every, every proposal had, had positives. Maybe some of the reasons that they may not have scored quite as high, in the case of the Women's Institute, first of all, they, they actually proposed doing the project under 40B, which was not what was required of, of the RFP, it was under local zoning. As well, there was, the reference for the product itself was very high, but the local management company, which they had partnered with in the particular site that, you know, we visited, was, was not, not doing a particularly great job. So with regard to GP Properties LLC, again, you know, a number of positives. Some of the things that stood out that maybe where their score was a little lower was the limited affordability, affordably restricted unit count. Also, it was made clear through the RFP process that the town is looking at its contribution of the land in terms of a long-term ground lease at a nominal fee, as the principal contribution, financial contribution it's making to this project. So in the GP Properties case, they had noted they were seeking subsidies from our local housing trust fund, as well as the CPC. So without further ado, based on the composite evaluations as noted above, the review committee has determined that Hall Keane and the Williams Building Company proposal is the most highly advantageous proposal, taking into consideration the evaluation criteria contained in the RFP. The committee therefore recommends to the board of selectmen that the lease be awarded to Hall Keane Management, subject to the successful negotiation of a lease and land development agreement, generally in the form that were attached to the RFP. And in your packet, you know, there are a few considerations that the review committee wanted to point out, you know, our points of discussion as things get finalized, should the board decide it wants to move forward. And I want to make particular note that we have a number of representatives from both Hall Keane Management and the Williams Building Company here tonight. I'm sure they would be happy to answer any questions, but again, their project was, was very highly endorsed by the review committee.
I'd like to meet the folks from Hall Keane.
Would you like to come up and say a few words? Or just introduce yourself?
Thank you. My name is Andy Burns, and I'm the president of Hall Keane. And tonight, we, we do have our, pretty much representatives of our full team here. First of all, we have Mark Hess, who's my partner from Hall Keane, who will be overseeing a majority of the project. Working with him will be Rio Seketti, who's a project manager. Guys gotta know to stand up, so you know who you are. We have Tref LaFleche, who is from the architectural firm, LDA Associates. We're really pleased with the work that they've done over the last couple of months. They, I don't know if you had a chance to look through the submissions, but it's amazing amount of detail that was put together in a relatively short period of time. Michelle Crowley, who represents the landscape and site planning aspects of the work that we've presented. And then the folks from the Williams Building Company, George Connolly, who's in the middle there, and then Jim Boucher, who's in the pink shirt behind. This has been a, a team effort, and one that we're really excited about. Obviously, we have a long, long ways to go. But I think that the professionalism and the competence with which you, as a town, have approached this project really encourages us. I've been involved in this business, affordable housing now, for many, many years. And I find, you know, these are complicated projects. And at the, at the beginning, which is where we're at, it's really important to have a great partnership between the proponent, if you will, and those that are going to execute it. And I think we've got that in place. Tucker's done a great job sort of organizing it. I think that the committee that you put together to review the proposals, obviously there's a, a deep amount of experience representing the town here.
Right, great.
Great. Any specific questions?
Just a comment, I really appreciate you coming out here. I suggested to Dawn that we invite you to come, and it really demonstrates your commitment to this. And we're all learning about affordable housing, and it really is a partnership. And you certainly have my personal commitment to assist in any way I can.
Great. I mean, I think that, that, that's the key point. It is a partnership. And we've spent a lot of time and effort, and will be spending a lot, a lot, lot more time and effort and money to get the project moving forward. But I can tell you, without doubt, we're going to run into problems along the way. And if you've got a good partner, you can solve problems. And what I see is the town in Nantucket's going to be a good, good partner.
Yeah, we're, we're really committed to seeing this project be something that we're proud of. And it's just so, so needed on the island.
The articles...
There's details we need to figure out, but I think that we've got a really good proposal here.
Great.
I want to thank you all for coming as well. I agree with Jim that, appreciate the commitment from the whole team, and the depths of the team as well. I really appreciate it, landscape architecture being well represented, so.
And I want to thank Dawn and Matt. We were very well represented. You've been at this for a couple of years now at least, so I want to thank you for that effort.
Yeah, thanks.
So you need a motion?
Do we have any questions from Ed, while he's on the phone? Any clarifications needed? Okay. I mean, we'll get to some details in the, the agreements, but, Ed, I guess we're all set.
Very good.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
How good do you think?
Bye.
So would you like a, a motion to accept the recommendation? So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimously accepted.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's get going. So that's the last item on our agenda, except for committee reports. Does anyone have anything to report today? No?
I'll give one, sort of, it's an island report, not, not necessarily a committee. The H2B program, which everyone's been reading about, they have put out 15,000 more visas, but they did it in a, sort of a, you know, what's the word? It's like a trap. It, it isn't for real. And what's happened is, there, there's a whole process that everyone has gone through. Now they're making everyone to go through that process again. You have to prove that you have financial hardship. You have to bring in the same amount of people you brought in before. There's audits. You have to attest to things. It really, and they left, and what they've done in, in writing, crafting this, they have shown how the politicians, in my mind, are, they're representing big business, they're not representing, you know, small businesses like Nantucket, because they've left a huge loophole in there, that people can go from job to job. So you can go from Disney to Aspen, Snowmass, back to Disney, and those are exempt. And all the people, like, you know, two of my employees trapped, who worked with me for 25 years, trapped in Jamaica with no jobs, and, you know, they have been left by the side of the road. And I think, you know, I, I just think it's sort of unconscionable how government, our government is treating certain policies. I just, I don't understand it. But, you know, so I will doubt, I doubt that any of the island businesses are going to try to go through this process, because they could get in so much trouble if they follow these rules that the government is putting forth. And I think there's a lot of people who have been longtime employees here on Nantucket, who count on coming here and having jobs, and, you know, contributing to our economy and businesses, and their families at home in different countries are being short-changed. And I think it's unfortunate.
It's not enough visas, it's too late.
Oh.
And, I mean, my husband also has employees that have worked for him for, like, 20 years, who can't get here. And their families from Jamaica rely on them. And, and from Bulgaria as well.
I don't know if there's anything we can do, but it's, it's, it's a huge detrimental impact on our economy. Service levels have been declining as a result of it, through no one's fault. Not only just the impact of the workers, but it's, it's going to have an impact on our, on our, our economy, and some, what people are willing to come back, so.
I think it already asked. I think we should write a letter.
They're focusing on, you know, some potential abuses of the system, but that was not happening here.
No.
Not, not really in the Northeast, from my understanding.
And then, then they've left a huge loophole, so you can go from winter to summer to winter again, and that's exempted. And, you know, and if you look at what businesses are using that, they're not the small businesses. It's sort of, I, I just think it's sort of the worst of our government, our national government in some ways, but...
We don't have to look too far for other...
No.
And you think writing a letter would, I mean...
It may, but it would probably be to the state, I would guess, it would be our representatives.
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah, we brought it up with our state representatives, they really don't have any...
It really needs to go to William Key, but he supports it, so.
I just wanted, I wasn't able to attend the Affordable Housing Trust Fund meeting yesterday, but the newest member of the committee has notes for us already, which was amazing. So I just wanted to, two things in particular there. Gosnold Nantucket made a presentation on a sober living house, which would be part, potentially part of some affordable housing as well. And the other one is Ann Cuspa's working on a covenant buy-down program. So people who are qualified for covenant houses, it would help them have access to some of the existing market rate homes. So it's really sort of adding to the, the covenant stock. So those are the two most interesting components. But again, I think moving in the right direction.
Have you guys heard any more from the co-op?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
No, we haven't.
Just curious.
Yeah, not yet, but that's actually a good point. I think the new property, looking for another property.
Yeah. Okay, nothing else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.